Contract renewal, budget review for the special town meeting with finance, other old business, new business minutes to approve, recycling, accepting a mattress collection container. Other new business, discussion and or vote relative to ARPA funding, discussion and or vote relative to the warrant signing process. Committee reports, town administrator reports, signatures and selectmen roundtable, and then carry on. So I will just ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have to tell you when I stand up there and say that every time, it's been so long since I've, you know, you said it routinely in grade school. But God, if I miss any of the words, it's got to be terrible. Thankfully, that hasn't happened. We're waiting for Rob to join us. Any visitor comments? Anne? Nope. Well, we can certainly, we'll hold up on the appointments, reappointments because I can't, oh, there is sense, I can't load them on the mail. We can skip to the cable build outs, contract renewal, Rob's getting set. So we do have the updated contract from Irene.
Yeah.
And we're planning on scheduling a meeting with her in September. She's going to attend our September 12th meeting.
Yeah, she'd like to, I mean, we can do it either, whatever you want.
The contract is up October 1st, correct? Okay.
Oh, I think it's the, I don't, oh, I thought it was the end of October 12th. Either that, either the 12th or the 26th.
This is different. So...
I will print it out.
I know that.
It's very giant.
It's October 30th because it started October 30th of 2012.
Very fortunate, it's October 30th. Possible.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get a chance to talk to them, that's it.
Okay. So, well, that, it does look, it's a little bit, looked like it's October 30th. So that was in the, you will take part in the September 12th meeting that Kelly can participate in, maybe we can, in the meantime, talk to the other two and see if they're on board. Okay, September 12th is...
Great.
It's October 22nd.
Do you want to do the budget review with finance so that we can release them and review the appointments and reappointments?
Yeah.
All right, so we're ready for you folks for the, the budget review. You guys want to go up to the tables?
At our last meeting.
You're going to have to speak loud because the air conditioner is going, so people aren't going to be able to hear you.
Be healthy, meaning Nicole. And workout, you can see on the far right, income recommendations. Which leaves us with thirty-six, almost thirty-seven thousand dollars, between two and a half. And it gives everybody their raises and it pays the school money.
So that's, that's cutting.
That's cutting, all these things are what we cut.
Right, so you're, we're marginally over two and a half. We're not thirty-six thousand, but we're...
We're modulate under.
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 Correct, but you're cutting thirty-six out and the difference is the increase in the cherry street receipts from what we originally cut.
Correct, correct. Because there was, there was thirty thousand, I believe, added through the cherry street.
An extra quarter.
Was it a forty?
Yeah.
From all the states' numbers, I mean?
Yeah, the final.
Yes, those are the finals. Now, we took, the major line item, we took it out of the snow and ice because you had hunted up to a hundred thousand in your budget from seventy. There is no requirement to do that. And if we wanted to, we could actually take another pile out of that and still increase it by five.
Well, take a look at the cuts, does she agree with them?
So let's have a big picture discussion first because I'm not sure the board and the finance committee are on the same page with regard to the school. So these cuts are meaningless if we're not going to pay another... Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, do you agree? So Kelly's not here, but she voiced her opinion the last time, the last meeting she was here, that she doesn't feel that we should be cutting our budget to fund the school because we've done it. And you have it in writing from Kelly. I'm, I don't have an issue with, I have an issue with the process. And you were on a call today, Nicole will talk a little bit about that with some of the other towns, with New Braintree and Public Stand. An issue with the process for the school and not being very sort of proactive in discussing, discussing the budget with us. They knew we were at four percent. They knew we were going to town meeting at four percent. And just, it needs to be a little bit more of a collaborative process. We feel like that's been the loss somehow. And it could be COVID related, it could be whatever. Personally, I'm not sure I'm in favor of giving them the additional increase. I think it's, and again, this was the discussion today with some of the other community leaders. It's, it's a ninety-five thousand dollar adjustment for the town, but that sets us up already ninety-five thousand ahead for next year, for the increase. And so we're already behind the eight ball, so to speak, with regard to next year's budget because that'll be our budget from this year and they're only going to build the increase based on that. The other thing is there are a significant number of students leaving this Quavon district and going to other schools. Pathfinder is one of them. There are other schools that students are choicing out of. We could, we could potentially financially handle the assessment. There are other towns who can't. Hubbardstown is a huge assessment. They can't, they're not going to, they're going to have to do huge cuts to their budget to make that assessment work. So it's sort of feeling there's two pieces here. We, we could afford it. I don't necessarily agree with where you guys have allocated the cuts, but that's a philosophy, that's a philosophy thing. But I think it's also, if we agree to this, we're sort of leaving the other towns and the district to swing a little. This is a big assessment for New Braintree. This is a big assessment for Hubbardstown. We're the three towns left to vote on this. So again, a school thought is if we collaborate with these, and I don't want the, personally, I don't want the fear of DESI coming in, the state coming in and adjusting our budget, guiding us on how we vote this. Either we agree with the school's assessment or we don't agree with it. We didn't agree with it at town meeting. You guys were on board with us not agreeing it at town meeting and now we're somehow shifting gears. I just, I'm giving you an honest opinion, my honest where I'm coming from. I don't know how you feel about the school and what you sort of feel the approach to this is.
I was just letting finish my step.
Of my rant.
I mean, my personal opinion is I think we, we got two other towns that are willing to work on this issue of the school just asking for more and more every year. Now, I do understand, I'm very knowledgeable about what goes on in school systems and I understand why they're asking for some of this stuff. But to me, if the schools, the administration of the schools don't start pushing back on the state, and if more towns don't shoot down what the state's asking for, then it's, it's never going to change. It's just we're, we're truly fighting state requirements. So I'm fine with sticking to what we, we asked for earlier and see if the school can come down to forty thousand. Why are we, we're cutting, randomly cutting forty thousand dollars out of our budget?
Well, the school, we want the school to be good at the ninety-five thousand dollars that we've cut, not, not, you know, not giving them our state aid, not giving them our state aid either. Staying at where we...
Just stay, yes, stay where we already voted until they come up with more. And come to see us about...
So that was a big discussion.
Before they, they just put it out there. I mean, you sat through a three hour meeting and they just put it out there. This is what we're doing.
And I did ask for it ahead of time. I asked for it ahead of time before our, you know, before they announced it at their school committee meeting. I'm not saying they're being deceptive, but not so much forthcoming and open with communication. So it is a process problem where I believe that we should be having regular meetings with them where we discuss, all five towns discuss, you know, where we are at and what we can comfortably or uncomfortably still afford. And that doesn't happen and it just gets sprung on us and it's really not fair. We have, and we have no choice but to cut our police and to cut our selectmen and to cut, you know, our snow and ice that we're definitely going to go over. You know, these types of things we cut aren't sustainable either. And the way, and they're not being, they're, I don't believe they're necessarily conservative when they build their budget. They build it to exactly what they want and then they present it. And it, we really need to have a better process going forward. So we're all prepared. But neither here nor there, I was in this FinCom meeting. I did all the cuts that they requested and I openly told them that is, I am not in favor of this and I will be recommending to my selectmen that we, we don't cut anything and we leave it the way it is.
So they, so sort of to follow up on that. Nicole is in meeting with DESI next week to talk about this specific issue and potentially we're going to get Hubbardstown or represent from Hubbardstown on voter. Ultimately, the voters are going to decide. So you're going to recommend your way, we're going to recommend our way. If they're not inconsistent, the voters are going to decide what to do. And, I mean, ultimately, it's their decision. So we can come up with this, this is your recommendation, this can be presented. We are going to come up with our position tonight on how we feel about that. We certainly know what Kelly's position is and decide what we're going to recommend. You know, I'm not anti-school at all. And for many years, we had given the school what they wanted. For many years, no, we were sitting on the seat. We gave the school exactly what they wanted and...
Well, we fought it a few years.
We did.
And then we got, and then we got through ACT with the four hundred. And that was the year we went through an act we had to give another one instead.
Agreed.
And it wasn't an easy process because we had to cut everything. So you don't want to get to a point where DESI completely says, "Here's your budget."
I would like DESI to come in. I would like DESI to come in and see what's happening.
You're not going to see our point. We gave everybody a two percent increase. We can do this under two and a half without any big stretches. I mean, we could almost take the whole thing out of Snow and Ice.
But do you realize where we're starting at for next year? If we just randomly roll over and focus?
A two and a half increase to the school.
Look at what you did with Snow and Ice. Look where you started in that one, your budget for Snow and Ice next year. You were at seventy thousand for this year. And you went to a hundred thousand. So next year, you're at a hundred thousand to start.
Well, we spent two hundred thousand.
That's fine, but it comes, but that comes out, that, that happens every year. And you usually work that out of your free cash.
Agreed, but this is an assessment. So our assessment, that's going to be our base assessment and they're going to build off of that. It's different.
And don't forget our assessment.
We have the opportunity to move these numbers around. If Ryan says, and I'm just picking on you, Ryan, because you're standing there, "I don't have this many elections, you can cut my expense." Fine, we're not bound to that expense, that's what the voters approve. We're not bound to a hundred thousand dollars of Snow and Ice.
We got now because it's in the budget.
We can modify the budget. We can, for this year.
Correct.
But next year, we don't have to start at a hundred thousand. We can start working what we want.
No, you cannot. You have to, with Snow and Ice, your previous year is your starting point.
That's actually true.
Yes, but I, I had no problem making it a hundred.
That's like the one, that's the one account.
You can underfunding.
And we are underfunding it by one hundred percent.
Yeah, we are, that's a, I think that is the issue. I mean, we've never met Snow and Ice.
And not a town around meets Snow and Ice.
But you do need to make some sort of, you know, you need to start working on getting up to a better amount than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of debt.
That's fine when you have a lot of money coming in.
Well, we never have a lot, we never will. We don't have high revenue, so we have to work with what we have. And it's, and it's only twenty, twenty-three hundred, almost twenty-four hundred dollars under two and a half, which is really too close.
Way too close, really things too close.
So you need to cut more if, if you, you know...
Well, there's still another ten thousand in Snow and Ice that we've got.
I guess, I'll ask you, why are you guys in favor?
I've been through this process.
So that's why you're in favor, just because you got burnt?
Yes. And if the town gets burnt, we're going to be cutting everybody's budget.
And after the fact, that you just...
Well, I do believe that if they come back, they'll come back at this, this ninety-five thousand dollar amount that we do see if we cut other amounts, if they came back.
What happened to their ESSR money?
They've got it. Their state aid went up this year.
They, when I looked at their numbers last year and they're projecting towards this year, they had a huge amount of ESSR money that they were going to put. Did they not put that money into the budget?
So they could, there was, the ESSR funds that came out, they could, towns could use them to reduce their assessment. Keep in mind, we also gave them over, I think, two hundred thousand dollars of our COVID money already. We willingly turned that over last year.
Before I got here, yeah.
I think it was, I don't, I don't recall the exact amount. It was a significant amount of money that we gave to Quavon out of our money. And we have not, so part of the ESSR, and there's certain requirements for the ESSR, but it can be used to reduce town assessments. That's not been offered. Whether we don't qualify or not, that hasn't been offered. That could help a town like Hubbardstown. Hubbardstown is really, so, so the other part of me is, we're in...
My, my pay taxes, I know it's going to, sorry.
Agreed, but they're part of the region. And so if we go ahead and just give in to the school, we're really sinking Hubbardstown as well, potentially.
Hubbardstown is not, it's unbracketed financially.
They're worse.
No, they're better.
They, we were on a call today and their town manager, Ryan, said that the budget is almost seventy, their school budget is almost seventy percent of their budget. So clearly, they're in a different position than we are. I don't think he would say that in a public call.
We get more money because of the number of free reduced slots.
So they're in a worse position than we are.
No, they don't have the free reduced slots. They have people that can pay their taxes. They have businesses at town. They have their banks.
Well, regardless, their assessment is that high. I mean, when we talk about formulas, like the school committee was talking about, ours, our, our formula, we are still giving them a million dollars over what we are required to give them.
We have since the beginning, it's been between fifty and sixty percent of our budget by the way.
But the whole school budget maybe, but not just Quavon because we also have Smith and we have Pathfinder. So the school budget could be at fifty percent, the whole school budget, but not just one school. Shouldn't be that high.
It has been sort of...
They're hiring ten point two new physicians.
No, they're not. They can't, not with a, not with a two and a half percent increase. They're going to be cutting.
Did you look at their, their whole...
The beginning one, the first one, yeah, that's longer.
And it was still in the one that she presented, that what she, they still want ninety-five thousand more that we appropriated at town meeting.
Well, so let's approach it this way. We have different philosophies. We're going to speak to our different philosophies on the town court every day. What are your thoughts, Rob? Are we in agreement about the consensuses that we are in a kind of support adjustment?
Good.
Okay, great. So if it passes, we need to figure out how we're going to work it. I don't necessarily agree with the philosophy. We've got some departments we're not touching at all. This is always, and again, we've had a difference with, with this, the last call around we went on the budget about just targeting certain departments. And...
About who we want to go through and...
Well, so let's just see.
I look at the size of the budgets because you kind of look at the size of the overall, I take it, for each department. And which ones have the room, because if you take in one percent out of the budget, that's pretty small.
Guaranteed, we're going to, if we cut IT, we're going to overspend it.
Same with fuel, right?
Same with fuel.
Well, look at the amount where fuel was raised.
But look at the fuel prices.
Fuel prices are coming up.
Fuel is not going to be on the right count.
I can't imagine our legal services are going to be any less not dealing with USDA. We need to, I don't have an issue with Snow and Ice. We've, we've cut from police, we've cut the selectmen, we've cut IT in here, we've cut the assessor. Have you guys, did you guys talk to any of these departments before you...
I did, I spoke with Jen, she was fine with it.
Is anyone talking to the police department?
I have not.
I did.
Okay.
I talked to the chief.
You cut a thousand dollars from New Braintree, did you?
No.
No, that's wrong. I don't know what, I don't even know, I was not going to write about that. I don't know how that points out. The, the New Braintree, because then we would have talked about the...
It's like, that's not...
Yeah, that's, so that, no, that's just...
You can't mention that.
So I do have something from the chief that talks about if he's, if he's forced to cut, where he would like the cuts. I think we should also have something from highway and I think we should also have something from fire. The fire department overspent last year. So I think we need to get their buy-in.
I actually, I actually had some on another account on highway.
So let's just go through, I personally don't care if you cut the selectmen's salary. I don't know how you feel about it. Selectmen's...
Working for how some people are.
That's right. I don't have an issue if we cut selectmen's expense for a thousand as long as we're not going to overspend. IT, if we cut the thousand out of it, we know we're going to have to potentially fund it. I can't imagine with all we're doing related to IT that we're not going to spend that much money. I'm okay with the assessors. Legal services, I think we're going to have an issue there, but if you want to take the thousand out, we know we're going to have to potentially fix that. Town building expense, again, we may have an issue there. The same with the fuel for the municipal building. So for Hardwick Police, so you've cut...
Thousand and a half of the money.
You've cut fifty-two thirty out of their budget. Rob, did you want to, Rob or Lori, did either one of you want to speak to the police budget?
I think the total reduction was sixty-two thirty.
But that included the New Braintree.
Including the Braintree, which we know we have to take out.
That's in and out.
You're taking it out right now. Okay.
So more or less, that fifty-two thirty, the chief worked to come out of other areas. Overtime isn't a good one as we're most likely going to be over that. He proposed if he was to cut the training account, thirty-five hundred dollars from that account. Have the guys more of NPI online training classes instead of sending them for reimbursement. The other account was the building account. He recommended only reducing that by a thousand as typically we're over that. Account usually, it can live a year. The third account is the police uniform account. Taking the seventeen thirty from that.
I just, about that, I put exactly what we need in there. I, there's no, that can't be reduced.
We went over it.
Well, I mean, it's, there's, it's contractually obligated and I have exactly what they need in there.
Could that be part-time?
I'll tell you what it includes, I have a note. Set up new officers, seven full-time officers and four part-time officers. And it comes up to twelve thousand one hundred dollars, so. Can't really cut out of there or will be out of compliance with our union contract. I didn't, I didn't, he didn't talk to me about it. I really should have had a meeting with him. I told him about their cuts, but he didn't.
So let's just, let's leave unicorns off. Let's just go with what he's recommending with the special town meeting.
Can we go over again what that is?
So what is it, forty-five percent?
Yep, thirty-five hundred, so thirty-five hundred out of police overtime and a thousand out of the building expense.
No, not overtime, training account.
Oh, sorry, training, yeah, sorry. So overtime is zero, training is thirty-five hundred.
I'm sorry, can we just say that again? Four, a thousand out of four to Lower Road and thirty-five hundred out of police expense?
Police training.
Training. And zero out of overtime.
Nothing out of police expense.
So fire, we have a thousand out of fire department expense. Is there another? Is there somewhere else that we can...
To go to Snow and Ice and get it back.
I hate to just use Snow and Ice as a...
No, but we can, I also told, talked to Marty about some other accounts.
Julie, you can take a thousand out of my registration, election salary registration because once I get through November, I'll know what I'll do in April at that point.
Election registration salary?
Correct.
That's salary or expense?
Salary.
So that'll be...
Salary, because it went from six to eight because it was unknown with the early voting and the reimbursement stuff. So I'm not going to need the whole two, so you can take a thousand on that one. You want, but one question I want to kind of get clarified before we get to the meeting. If you recommend not going to the school and they go against it, are you guys, are you, are you prepping to do another vote? Because what's going to happen is that we have, let's say hypothetically that yours passes where we don't increase, then none of the cuts are going to be needed.
Right.
So then procedurally, someone on the prevailing side is going to have to do a motion to reconsider. And in which case, if we have a vote to reconsider and the, the school budget passes, then you're going to have to take into account all of these cuts here. So is this what you're prepping for?
This is going to be, this will be available. We're going through this, this will be available at the meeting.
Okay.
So presuming somebody wants to change my, change our motion, when we make the motion, they can amend the motion.
But right now, are you, are you, is the, is the board on board with just keeping it the way it is?
I believe so.
Okay, that's, just procedurally, that's just what I need to know. So that, you know, you guys can hash out the numbers and everything else. I just need to make certain I'm prepared for whatever.
And we're just going through in the event that our motion fails, where, and, and they decide to support the full assessment on the school, where that's going to come from.
Okay, because ideally, ideally, we would have two, ideally, we would only have one, basically, because if we're, unless, obviously, we've got changes because of the error on one of the salary accounts. So we would adopt a revised line item budget with the necessary changes that need to be out there. And then have a second budget with all the cuts that we're doing here.
So two worksheets.
Yes. That'd be the simplest way to do it. Obviously, if somebody tries to make changes, we'll have, and, you know, like I said, I'll work on the worksheet with Nicole and make sure that there's not anything funky.
Is there any more questions?
I think it makes sense just to settle one more quick meeting.
A little school party?
Yeah.
Anybody to school or whatever?
You call up the... Yeah, I mean, I'd rather, there's no surprise. I mean, this is a, they can see the meeting, understand where we're coming from and, you know, happy to have the dialogue with them about what this means to some of these departments. And we'll be prepared if it passes, but it's not ideally, at least what I want to see happen. But it's not going to be decided, it's the most of the summer, so. But yeah, I mean, your meeting with them on Monday, could we do another meeting? Sorry, we got a little sidetracked with, we do a Monday, meeting on this. Kelly's not back yet, maybe. When is she back?
I think she's back this Wednesday. But I'm not positive.
If I can do a Wednesday meeting, I had to cancel it. We'll talk next week.
No, I think she's here this, I think she's here, coming this Monday, this Wednesday. No, I think she's here this, I think she's here, coming this Monday, I think this Wednesday, ten.
That's this Wednesday, I'm, I'm thinking of like the sixteenth. It'd be Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. Does that work? Just so we can, Nicole can relay, if we need to change our position, we have a, you know, if Desi says we're going to, you know, I think you're going to be direct and say what's going to happen. And if she gets the inclination that they're going to do what they said, then we're going to need to rethink our position. But it...
I'm, I'm more than willing, the rest of the point of view, I just, I feel like we're going into this. We're just asking.
Yes, yes. So what was the other?
It's very hard to hear with the AC, so everybody, please, speak up.
Snow and ice. And a thousand out of fuel. I would take the snow and ice to twenty-five. Just leave the police cuts where they are. The thirty-five hundred, yeah, that's mine.
So you guys are...
Forty-five hundred.
You guys are clear, you heard that?
Forty-five hundred, yes.
So it'll be forty-five hundred in total.
What does that mean?
Are we going to, well, are we going to need the fire in, or take it out?
Need the fire, where it is.
Is there anything else we can cut from fire?
There's nothing else on that. Same up to have my fire cuts?
Yeah, I, I, I... Just while we were calculating, the school, entire schools, fifty percent, all schools are fifty percent of that.
With ours, with, with four percent.
That was last year, I didn't calculate this, yeah. It was just forty-eight thousand in cuts. Something forty-one thousand. I guess forty-two, so this is what I have. We have fifteen hundred from selectmen salaries, a thousand from selectmen's expense, thousand from IT, five hundred from assessors, a thousand from legal, a thousand from elections and registration salary, five hundred for town building, four thousand for municipal building fuel, a thousand from, sorry, thirty-five hundred from police training, a thousand from building expense for four to lower road, a thousand from fire department expense, twenty-five thousand from snow and ice, and a thousand from highway.
Yep, forty-two thousand.
That gives us a little cushion.
Yeah, you have thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, that was too close.
So, based on the revised, so that, that's what that takes, we're looking at the... So do we have, we don't have a column here that has...
That's the leftover. It's seven thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars, so I need to...
That's what we're under two and a half?
We're under two and a half by that. That's the cuts.
What's our total budget based on that? Or assessments?
I can't, I don't have, I didn't count, I only brought over what we're subtracting, that's going to take me a little time.
So if we're looking at... I want to look at the percentage of the school budget for the whole budget. So the two-seven-seven-four is the assessment that they're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the blue column. So if we take that, and minus out forty-two thousand, just six-one-four and four-one-four, divided by three-one-four, sorry, three-one-seven-four, two-one-four-five. Forty-eight percent of the budget. So what was probably assumed in the last meeting? Well, I'm also calculating on the block, so I mean, I...
It's, it's about right. It's, I, I have the top one, it's on the top. And you lost, I remember I lost my telephone to Smith.
I thought Smith was empty.
It is, but I mean, who knows from any given year?
It's what it is versus the tax level. I always get that as well. So your tax level is forty-four million five-five-seven-two-two-five-seven-six.
Well, minus the forty-two.
No, that's the tax level.
Sixty-five percent.
That's what it always basically runs, it's sixty-five percent of the tax, taxes.
But just remember again, this is just one school, that three.
No, it's all.
Oh, that's all of them?
Mm-hmm. Last year was sixty-six.
Yeah.
So we had, yeah, last year.
We did.
That's where it's, it's averaged above sixty percent.
Do you want to be involved in this meeting, speak with the school if they come, if we meet again?
Yep.
Do you want my heads to be, or do I need it?
You're welcome.
It's not what I want, you guys want to be here. You're chair?
Yeah.
So, Nicole, can you post a meeting for August sixteenth? That's next Tuesday, that's next... And hopefully, it will not be a long meeting. Can we have, I can work with you on the worksheet, can we have the worksheets ready for the meeting? Just so that we know what's going to be handed out on the twenty-second?
Mm-hmm.
Which I don't have on my calendar, I should, I should, I should put it here. And just so we know exactly what we're going to be meeting at. You looked at the budget, and the police numbers are correct in the budget that we have here?
Yeah.
The errors have been fixed?
Checked it fifty times.
I'm sure you did. All right.
So when we approve, whichever one gets approved, and that is correct.
We're going to have both scenarios, because if we still agree that...
Correct, but that's what needed to be fixed, though.
Right, yes. So whatever way it goes, we're prepared, because there's nothing worse than doing this on the town day pool during the middle of the vote.
No.
But with that?
Yep.
And hopefully, it'll be a short meeting. Will you invite the school to come to that meeting as well?
On the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Not too late to wait.
It shouldn't be long. So then we'll have some, this, Nicole has some direction from Desi on what the possibilities are. So you know, we want to...
I doubt they'll give me any real concrete, because...
They're not going to lay their hand out.
No, not only that, but the school hasn't even approached them yet, so they're not going to, you know, do anything hypothetical.
No, it's not that, it's not that...
But what I really want to talk about is process, formulas.
But Desi's aware, because the school's on a one-twelve budget.
Yes.
So they're fully...
They're aware.
So she had to notify, Sheila had to notify them way ahead of time.
Yes, they do.
She knew ahead of time that the towns weren't going to pass this.
Yes.
So this isn't a surprise.
Process is that if it fails again, then it goes to Desi.
So it would be nice to know what the possibilities Desi could do. So we just know what's in front of us, it's A, B, or C, or it could be D, E, or F, just so we can make an informed decision, and not a decision out of fear, that they're going to come back and make this adjustment. The other thing we talked about today in the meeting is getting together more routinely with some of the other district towns. So either it's a selectman, maybe finance, town administrator, at a collaborative meeting, so that we're not having these discussions at the eleventh hour after a budget, but maybe doing it quarterly, so we can, there's other reasons to meet quarterly, shared services, all the things like that. We're talking about that today. Maybe, not that anyone needs another meeting to go to, but I'm going to be proactive to have those meetings at the time.
And Carol, my assistant, who was a town administrator for ten years in Paxton, said they had meetings with their, they, they're regional, and they had meetings with all their towns monthly. All of, well, it was the town administrators and the superintendent. Just, you know, even what's going on, programming, you know, what the school is doing, just informational.
So maybe that's a suggestion we made to the superintendent.
We're a lot more proactive than, I mean, this is, you know, as hard as it is for us to have this discussion, I'm sure it's hard on the other end, because they know that probably two of the three towns aren't going to pass this. Would be my guess. I, I don't know how, I don't know, Lori, can you share what new brain trees looking at for this?
Their finance and select board is great. They, they, they're the same, they will not give. And it's up to the voter. Like they do not advise, they can't.
And Hubbardson is the same, they both are in unison, that they will stay with their original assessment they passed at town meeting. Trying to say this for the girl who does the minutes, too, because she can't hear anybody.
Well, quick on what, the real one will not happen. If we voted down, then the odds are definitely that they have two towns that will vote it down. So they will go back, they'd either cut, or the state, they can cut it by a dollar and make us go back.
You think we need one to vote it down?
Huh?
They only need one of us to approve it.
No, no.
No, they need two.
They need two.
They already have to.
They need four total.
They need four total for the approved budget.
So they will come back. The state will be involved, the state will look at the numbers, they're not going to help the towns, and the state doesn't care. All the regional schools in the state are less than twenty percent of the voting population. And it probably, we're, we're, they don't care what we do. I mean, that's, they're going to want to solve it, which historically has been giving the school what it needs. And we don't have the figures, we can't say, we can't make the budget because we can't. We gave everybody a two with enough percent raise.
Well, we gave two hundred thousand in COVID, that, that...
I think it was about, can we research what that was? But, but we also should.
And all these...
Is that what it was used?
Yeah, what was it?
I mean, we're in the school fed.
We had services here, but we have to do it on COVID.
Any student who wanted, for the entire two years, summer and winter.
Understandable, we, we did give them money, we supported that action. I mean, given two percent raises.
So, I think it's, it's definitely that we need to know where the money went. But I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what's going to happen. So that's that. So we won't, we'll be on this two-thirds budget into September, October, November. They'll come back and we'll be doing the cuts that we're doing right now. We vote this budget, that takes us out of the equation, they still don't have a budget. They still have the, either one more town will vote it, and they'll have a budget, which could happen, or the, they don't have a budget, and the whole process goes on. But we're out of there. We're done. You can, you can put the time that would go into all of this into our tottering financial sector and other things. We're, we're done. Because if they vote a lower number, our budget goes down, we'll be one way. If they vote a higher one, I don't think they can vote higher than us.
They can't, they only have three options.
So we're set, we're done, you're done with it, you can just forget it for a year. So is this your year you want to tilt this win now? We've got the state, and the federal, and everything else.
We say that every single year, Cheryl, and it's time to tilt it. It is time to tilt it. These people talking about raises, I totally come up and it angers me. These people have gone without raises for a long time.
Oh, I agree with you, I agree with you, I have supported this raise on...
You're on the personnel committee, you know, you heard it.
I, I support it, I support everything she's done, she's done one and then equality throughout.
Two percent is marginal, marginal. It's a slap in the face for a lot of these people who haven't had a raise in years.
They got one last year, they're getting one this year.
And the school gets them every single year, Cheryl. Every single year.
The school has a union.
Even the non-union get even more of their expectations.
Notice when we have contract negotiations with certain administration people, that they usually come out a lot better. It's not common.
I'm not, I'm not for the school, I'm not against the school getting raises, I think people should get raises. I think when that argument is used, yes, but we gave our people two percent raises, that's not a great argument to use, because these people deserve the money, they haven't had it for many years, while their counterparts in education have been getting this, and it's been built into our assessment. So I don't really think that's a fair assessment.
Well, we used to put what everybody in public, in the whole district was getting into our annual report.
And once...
Passed out of town, we, everybody's salary is passed out of town.
But we don't know the increases, they don't see the increases from year to year, we don't know unless...
Yeah, you, you can, it's, it's public information.
Agreed, but by looking at the annual report, you don't see that. So the voter doesn't know that somebody got a three percent. It doesn't matter, it's a moot point. It's a moot point.
We're going to move it down a...
Yes.
Tuesday, right?
Mm-hmm, that's us. Yep. And revises it. It's not an easy time, I get, I get what you're saying, I just don't pull a solid poller. But we don't have to. We don't have to do it. All right, we're good on that? Okay.
Thank you.
I included your email?
Yes, good.
Their appointments.
Yep.
Their appointments, yeah.
So the listing we have in front of us is...
Is that mine or yours?
It's the one you sent.
Okay. Yeah, what, what, in comparison, I wasn't sure what you had, in comparison to the one that she may have sent you, those were, some of the names in the, in the, in the changes, there hasn't, there wasn't anybody added, there wasn't anything removed, it was just my, I want to call it cleanup, it was just, just minor formatting.
So your questions that you raised here about the clerk being appointed for the planning board?
Yeah, just, yeah, just, just a question, I'm just asking, you know, I didn't know if you guys did it or not, or if they did it, that's all, it's just, it's minor clerical stuff, and like, some of the names that are on there, you know, like Rod Lee, he, he's moved, Catherine Carr has moved. And then one of the FinCon members resigned, one of the registrar set resigned. So all the names that, they're not on that list, they're on the previous list, so if you compared both, I didn't...
So this is accurate, based on all these edits?
That's, exactly, in other words, that sheet that you have in front of you reflects what I've done.
I'm still questioning how many people actually need to be appointed.
So, and, and so then Paula had come in to see me today to try, she said, she had given me a breakdown of what committee was appointed by town meeting and what was by you guys. Honest, I don't, I'm pretty good at remembering things, I don't remember that. I had an incident with my drawer, the top drawer fell out, crashed the floor, so I can't get in there until tomorrow when I go to Worcester to get a key to fix it. So if she has that, there are some of the committees on there that are from town meeting, like the, the master plant capital planning. All the other ones, it's, it's at your discretion, and our bylaws stipulate that pretty much, once the committee's done, that's it.
You can disband them?
You can disband them, they don't need to be reappointed. So that was a question on like a broad basis, I didn't know the CERT, I don't even know what that is, the C E R T.
That's been under Eric Volkan, and it was volunteers who would sometimes help with direct traffic or shepherd trick-or-treaters around.
Yeah, so that's not something that...
On CPR and...
That's what I mean. So it's like, that's not something that has to necessarily be appointed. Appointed, appointed officials should be, you know, the accountant, treasurer, the collector and committees that the town has set up or you set up to give you information, feedback. You know, we don't have the superintendent search committee anymore. We don't have the police chief search committee anymore. So if there are committees on there that you don't feel you need, you don't have to continue on appointing them. And that was what I just questioned with the broad, the broadband and the C E R T.
The other thing is, there are, well, there is, at least there's one member of the ZBA that's also in the planning board. He's the chair. So if, if they deny a permit, it's going to the ZBA and it's going right back to him. And I don't, I don't know if that's a conflict.
Who's on the?
Eric Volheim.
Eric isn't listed on the zoning board.
On the zoning board of appeals?
I was listed on the ZBA, but it's not listed here under the planning board.
No, planning board's elected.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yes, that's true.
I don't know the statute and the thing is, is the zoning board hasn't met in years. What she raised, I apologize for stepping in. Sure is a good point.
I believe it's probably one of those things. I think it was just, just turned and turned because he was off of the planning board for a while. And then he got back on like four years ago.
Good.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have, you don't have to put him on. And then if you find out that he, that he can be, then you could put him on if you wanted to do a.
Or the opposite. So we, we can link.
Should we just clean this up?
I would suggest that and we can start from scratch because.
Let's just clean, let's take off the ones that we don't, like the animal inspector, we don't have to appoint them because they're appointed by the board health. Assistant town clerk, which is vacant, but appointed by the town board. Let's just take off the ones that we don't, so we have a nice list every year for reappointments.
Well, the reason why I do that is because then I have to merge two documents for our elected officials who isn't appointed, but we certainly do that. That way it's just you guys. And I, and I told people.
Make it sincere.
Because then I'm going to have two lists in the report. I'm going to have appointed by the selectman, appointed by town clerk, appointed by constitution.
Like, I mean, we, everybody seems to be appointed, like the whole town, except for some reason highway always is never involved in all of the regular processes. Like, you don't have the highway guys who get sworn in.
Correct.
But you'll have like somebody's assistant, administrative assistant gets sworn in.
But anybody, anybody that's responsible for any action that, which they're taking, if they're taking an authoritative action on behalf of the town, they should be sworn in. I mean, but it's not, it's not my call. My role is to administer an oath. If someone is required to take an oath and they don't take it, that's not on me. That's on that person. So it's just, it's recommended that those that do, for example, I think the assistant to the treasurer collector should be because she's taking in tax money. She's acting and assisting her, but that's.
It's not, I think, it's certainly not a cross I want to fall on or whatever that is.
And again, it's not anything that I'm particularly concerned about. My role is to simply administer it here. I really don't have much enforcement when it comes to things. I have to do ethics. I have to do public meeting law and I have to do conflict of interest. So. I don't think anybody that works for the town should, should, I don't want to say paralegions, but.
So, so just to be clear, is there any reason why we couldn't include in our appointments if something's already, someone's already been appointed by board health?
No, it can be taken out. I mean, you could, you could simply, if you wanted to adopt that sheet, you could say, I'm going to adopt, you know, the sheet as, because it clearly states that, or it's, that was appointed by board health or by me, or I could take out and print it for you.
What do you want to do?
We should just, I think, hey, hold this forward.
Clean it up for next time.
I hate to kick the can, but we have someone.
I mean, she did fantastic putting that all together. All I'm doing is just, all I'm doing is just fine tuning and I'm not trying to take away. Like she said, it would be nice to have a nice starting point because then I can, I don't want to say throw away all the, all the spreadsheets that I had to go back that you don't know who's who, when they started, et cetera.
The only thing I'd say, I'd give, I don't, broadband advisory committee, we don't have any useful, so there's one group, maybe we just cut off this list. But I think I can make the motion to accept this appointment list, except for the broadband advisory committee that we can disband.
It works.
You have to observe as part of the emergency preparedness thing. So you might check that.
Well, that's, I, I'm just saying, I'm going to, I think we should accept this, but we obviously need to research some of these other things because it is a New Braintree and Hardwick thing. So we can't technically, you know, appoint anybody to New Braintree.
Yeah.
So who on there is from Hardwick? So the people from Hardwick should be the only ones that we are, but, you know, it's little things, but at this point, it's just a formality to make sure these people are in their positions as they're supposed to. Am I right?
All right. So, so just to clarify, because I have to, so I have to second it. So your motion was to approve the appointments by the board of selectmen list that was prepared by the town clerk with the exception of the broadband advisory committee and with the exception of any New Braintree residents that live under the emergency management or the grocery cert. And they, under.
Sure. I'll second your motion.
So the original motion failed. So moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay. So these are the.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You include my new board member?
Yep.
And took Jim Stafford off.
I think Jim is.
What's, what's the committee again?
Town hall.
Town hall.
Yeah, Jim is still on.
We are very confusing everybody in the whole fair state.
But Peter's on.
Peter Schmidt.
Peter Schmidt is on.
Yeah.
It's yourself, Lucinda, Peter and Jacob.
And Liz Riley?
Liz Riley's not on here.
Want to add her, add her?
And Jim Stafford? He's off.
He's off.
It's all athletes. And now you're still at five.
How about this? I move to appoint Liz Riley to the town house advisory committee and remove Jim Stafford.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Ryan.
Then you know, thank, thank you at the board.
Okay, so we handle the table bill though.
See ya.
Thank you. Budget review, is there any other business we need to talk about?
Uh, not that I am.
Okay. Under new business minutes, did you have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah. Is that right?
The March 28th in red.
Because it was revised. See, the, the, because I, I had them, I didn't have them in there, but I had them in your packet, but I didn't have it on the agenda.
Okay. Hi, Rachel. I didn't see any issues.
I move to accept the minutes from February 28th, 2022, March 14th, 2022, March 28th, 2022, June 27th, 2022, July 11th, 2022, and August 1st.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Cycling, acknowledging and accepting $1,000 for mattress collection container under the sustainable materials recovery program, municipal grant program from the mass department of environmental protection.
Do you want me to read the letter?
Sure.
Letter from the governor. Dear Ms. Kapp, congratulations. I am pleased to notify you that the town of Hardwick has been awarded a sustainable materials recovery program grant for a mattress collection container in the amount of $10,000. I want to thank you for your commitment to reducing waste and increasing recycling for the benefit of our communities and the environment. In closing, you will find further instruction from the D E P on next step. Please feel free to contact Rachel Smith if you have any questions. Charles Baker and Karen Polito. So she got a grant, so she's going to get this thing, this, this roll off, this container and it's, the best one she found is still under $10,000. So, you know, she's going to get this nice big container and they're going to be able to generate revenue by taking in mattresses from people.
Okay. Instead of the ideas that, instead of ending up in the side of the street somewhere?
Yeah.
Back road. So we just need to make a motion to accept the municipal grant.
I move to accept the municipal grant for sustainable materials recovery program.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Any other new business special?
I don't think so. I mean, I think I was going to cover the meeting today in my report.
Which we talked about.
Yeah, we did.
Next item is the discussion or vote relative to the Art of Hardwick. I know we talked about this in the meeting last week of discussing, do we have anything from Sarah on where she's at or where, where we are?
Not necessarily. I mean, I have invoices that they worked on as of July 1, you know, before you allocated any of the funding, which you still haven't. So they're kind of just sitting here and it's a lot of money. And I, again, I, I feel, you know, if I was a selectman, I'd be beside myself as well. And so I had a conversation with her because they, they equal almost $25,000. This is basically closing out through June. So they'll be reconciled, posted, all of the things for the most part through June. I know. And so I had a conversation with her and said.
I'm not joking.
I was, so I.
Sorry. We don't work.
I have three invoices and it's all, it's all working with, of course, the treasurer and the collector and she was doing, you know, some collector work, right? She said, you know what, what we need you to focus on is helping close the end of the year. Because, you know, honestly, she was caught up through November and, until we lost the person in December. So, you know, to have to do all of that, you know, that's, that was, that was an issue. So there's that. And then, and then now finishing up to close the year because now she's got an assistant who is, you know, her second week now, she's doing great, already knows a lot. And, and so I said, you really have to focus on the high level stuff. If there's something that Jessica can do, you know, on her own, I'm trying to think of something right now, like any of the posting or reconciling, like things that she can just get done on her own now that she has an assistant. We got, you have, we have to prioritize. You can't keep spending. So I know she worked with Jen on some reconciling, I don't know. You know what? I don't really know exactly what they do. But, you know, I just said, it's kind of, you really have to reel it in and only do as absolutely necessary. We'll take care of the rest. I'm going to help train the department. I don't, you know, I can't train her specifically on what to do. That's why I said, you know, prioritize on what to do daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, et cetera. But I can help with the management of it, you know, or take, take that piece out of it. She doesn't have to do, you know, what, how she should act if she, and I had, I also had a meeting with Jessica separately, you know, what should happen if there is any discipline or any, you know, don't go to Sarah for that, come to me for that. And, you know, we're going to try to, we really have to start separating. We've, we've spent a lot of money on it and we've come a long way and we did create a brand new department and I think DLS is going to be pleased when they come in and see what we've done. You know, so it's necessary, but thankfully we have the money, but, you know, I'm really, really trying to reel it in now. Yeah, of course.
How was the new?
Employee? So I talked to her a little bit today. She's doing really well. She already knows a lot. So now she's just kind of learning the Hardwick way and parts of Vadar that she didn't know. And, you know, Jessica has training this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and she does, she's thinking about maybe not going to the training on Thursday because it's payroll and she wants to show her how. But I just said, make sure that you don't need to go to this training because you really should have this training. But she says she's been going and she believes this is her final year for her to be certified because it's three years of paying dues and she, she's not sure she's going to look into it because this was her second or third year of paying dues so she can become certified.
Did we take care of this last year?
Yes. No. Nope. It's, it's all set. It's fine. It was a mistake. It was a typo on their part. I have a new one, but that one was just sitting there, so it's, I, it's, it's, it's different. It was a mistake. They left the old itemized, but with the new work. So I have detailed reports of every minute that she's working.
Okay.
So I have all of their worksheets for who's working and when.
Okay.
Whether it's absolutely Sarah or an employee who's less.
Okay. So we have to, so we asked her to come up with a budget. I don't think it probably is going to be that much or extent.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's where I was like, whoa. I mean, I just sat here for a minute and was like.
Did we just get those?
Well, in July. So, but I think that whole amount that, you know, was more, was more for everything that they've done and they, and that was, they were 15-hour days, two 15-hour days each week. They came in to just bang it all out. And Jessica doesn't get extra for that. She has a salary and that's it. So it's just, it's, I think it's growing pains too. I mean, thank God we have this or we would be in the same position we were in.
So, so we have $25,000 we have to allocate because we have nothing allocated for this thing.
Right. You have an, yeah, because I, the bill was sent out and I was like, and then she, Lori asked me about it and I was like, no, no, no. Send that back to me. It hasn't been approved yet. So nothing's been allocated.
So we have to allocate these $25,000 just to cover the amounts that they've spent already.
Right. So she, originally she had said 50. She said up to, not to exceed. She thought it would be 35. She still thinks it'll be 35 if with all of this work done, plus the one day a week for the next few months until like November.
So if we allocate, so it's about $1,000.
Well, no, it's because two 15-hour days, right? So two days and 30 hours, which would never, they'll never do that again. They got all the way up through the end of May by doing that.
But she's saying one day a week.
If one day a week, but that's at our discretion too. Like, you know, we can start really pumping the brakes on it.
Yes, it is. It's about.
You know, we could potentially just stop here.
No, I don't think we should. I'm going to tell you why. I think that the one, maybe it's every other week, but let's do it once a week and then maybe go once every week. Because a little bit of this, I think she needs continued confidence and somebody needs to be checking on her as she's gaining confidence to make sure that she's needing the limitations and everything's getting better. I mean, this is training. There's no, I mean, we send people to college or something to learn something, so this is, I guess this is just part of.
Well, and that's what I, and I did tell Jessica that. Well, and that's what I, and I did tell Jessica that, I said, you can imagine the position that we're in, you know, spending all of this money on you and you could walk out that door tomorrow. So we might need an agreement that you sign that you stay with us. You know, I don't want to have a whole management contract, but an agreement like that you stay with us or you've got to pay us back because I don't want to lose that investment. When she said she'd sign anything, obviously legal would do it, we would, it would be beneficial for both sides.
You want to have legal looking for that?
They can, but those things are-
Well, you have enforcement and that's the biggest thing I do whenever I do policy and you've got to have enforcement. I can't tell you how many times in my past that I'd be like, well, look, we have an ordinance, we have a bylaw, and I'm like, what do I do if they don't do, I have nothing? So I absolutely always have enforcement in there, so, you know, you sign it, you pay us $25,000 if you leave within the next three years, something.
Honestly, we do police officers all the time. Paper guys get trained and then they decide they want to go somewhere else, so. I guess my point is, I think we should just allocate the money and keep moving forward because I feel like we're going in the right direction, so.
I do.
So how much do you want to allocate, so we have to allocate, you know, $25,000 for the bills that were passed?
I say we go with 35 and that gives them 10, roughly 10 weeks and that gives us enough time, so we'll leave it up to their judgment on how they want to do this.
That sounds great.
Will we take $35,000 from ARPA to put it towards what kind of, sorry?
It stays in ARPA, it comes right out of ARPA.
Yeah, where are we?
No, ARPA has its own account, so you just allocate the 35,000 of the ARPA goes toward-
Towards?
Towards the-
Towards Mina Askmeanything.
Towards Mina Askmeanything.
Anything gets something.
Askmeanything, sorry.
Great. I'll second that, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Next item in this discussion, vote warrant signing process.
Just one more thing on that first.
Yeah, so-
Ray called me right before, he got a last minute number from Bloodbow of $10,500 for the hydrants and all parts to repair per hydrant, so, per hydrant. Our last number was $12,500 for hydrant, just, that was just the labor to replace the hospital products, so now this is $10,500, but they're providing labor and the equipment.
How many hydrants are there?
Five, five. Because Jaws and Rose is a something different issue.
So that's 92.5?
We'll still just solicit.
Is that like something we need to move on quickly?
And we don't, I don't have anything, he didn't give me anything, everything that you approved, you've had something concrete that I give to Melanson to pay out of ARPA because we have our reporting-
I just wanted to bring it up.
Oh, okay.
I just feel like I wanted to get it out there, but this, this just, oh, he didn't give me anything in writing, it was a, he had a verbal conversation with Bloodbow and they didn't give him anything running out of his-
So we do, you know, we've said it repeatedly that we need something in writing and that it all comes down necessarily to the reporting we have to do. And it's very detailed and every time I get an approval, I send your vote on letterhead with the amount and all of the quotes behind it to Melanson because that's the way that we report it, so that's why I keep saying, where is it in writing, you know, I can't just willy-nilly it.
And the other issue is the sewer that we approved. The state is requiring a lot of stuff for us to do through the state, so I think we're going to have to take a different avenue, so probably going to have to solicit bids on that project also.
We've heard a statement about, we took that last week, didn't we?
Because it was going to be part of the project, now it can't-
As long as that stays under $50,000, Marty said he was going to try to solicit three more bids just to see what-
Two, stays under 50. You just solicit, it doesn't even have to come back. I'll talk to Marty, if anybody will ever wants to come and talk to me, I'm here.
Yeah, I think, I don't know what was going on, he just called me today, just, he was just asking me, I do have experience working in the state, so he was just asking me about how that worked and I'm like, yeah, like it complicated. If there's not an item in the bid, in the bid job, like they did this job, if there was no item for that particular work, then the state gets, they, to create an item on their bid form that can be asked, so he just, you know, try to, just get, just solicit this, but Bloodbow's one to do it. Alright, that's all I have.
So is that the only thing we really need to go out tonight with this?
Yeah, because like, we're going to do the water at the water meeting, right? Talk about meters, the meters are not going to be, that quote's not going to be good anymore when we do it September, so, I, it's plenty of getting any information out of East National Waters, so I'll try to get, I'll try to get, or I'll just reach out to the company directly. But that's, that's it, I think, everything else we're good with right now.
So discussion vote on the warrant signing process, so that I think came up as a result of the meeting that we had with Mel, Melanson.
Yep.
So in the past, I think, we used to talk about whether we want to look at the warrant as a board, we want to designate somebody to look at the warrant and sign it because they're not allowing them to be released or paid until we have the approval.
Do we have between Nicole, maybe one of the selectmen members on it?
Yeah.
That way it's, there's some-
Right, we talked about that, you know, they vote to authorize you as chair, sign-
I mean, I'd almost see her as maybe as a member, that way if somebody's in the chair is available.
Somebody else can get that, that's fine.
Good.
So we either inform the motion. So I'll entertain a motion to-
I just want to analyze it.
No, it's, it's all right, we'll entertain a motion to authorize the pool, authorize two signatures on the warrant, one being a member of the board of selectmen in addition to the pool in order for the warrant to be processed and the checks to be generated. Who did second it, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm technically not supposed to make a motion, so I should second that, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's all good.
You're fine, you go.
That's all good. Committee reports, we have the police department report emailed to us, you said that?
Yeah, and then I have the library that I forgot to send you, so I can send that to you for an email.
Okay, we can always talk about that next time. So can we make sure that the ARPA funding is on the agenda for next time also?
Yeah, I mean, I just assume, leave it on and if there's nothing to do, we just go right by it.
Okay. Town administrator reports.
So USDA has re-released the funding, so we're back on to the sewer project. I know I said it at the last meeting, unfortunately it wasn't recorded, so it's just the people that were there. So, just to let everybody know that we're back on track, we have a couple of little hiccups, it's not surprising, so we are, we are moving forward again. I had a meeting with Joe Delbo, who is now the lead on the project, and we spoke about costs thus far, how monthly reporting should go, the format he wanted in, it's a simple spreadsheet, but the way that we were sending it was just a report through Vadar and it was, you know, it's cumbersome for him because then he has to manually enter things, so we now are going to use this spreadsheet and go forward like that. DPC has submitted an NOI to conservation because where the pump, where the proposed pump station is going to be has, is in their jurisdiction. We are waiting on a title research for parcel, the attorney said up to two weeks, so this week is two weeks, so I'm going to harp on them tomorrow and see if they've got that back. It shouldn't be too complicated because we've done a lot of the legwork already in the past. Retirement insurance, I'm writing the policy for the personnel review, I will try to call a personnel meeting in the near future to include it into our personnel handbook that is currently being typed up and that will be in front of the selectmen at some point when it's done. And DLS was supposed to be out on 7/1 to start our financial review, but they informed me that they lost an employee, which put them behind schedule, Hardwick is next on their list, hopefully they get out here very soon, he told me by the end of the month, it's now the 8th, so I'll be reaching out to them again. What was our PF date, so we have an open space and rec plan that we want to work on to update so we can get some park grants, the park and rec committee is, would be, would like to get some granting going so they can put some equipment at the park, the Gilbertville Park. We need a plant, we need to appoint a planning committee with CMRBC, but we don't have that yet, it's not formally been released that we actually have planning grant money, so we're waiting. The Hardwick Fair is August 19th and 20th, hope to see everybody there, townhouse, I know, I wrote so many inspections. We have building, fire signatures, elevator, security system, and now we need a fire escape inspection. I called a few companies that were willing to do it and I was waiting to hear back, I did hear back from them on Friday and I also heard back from another architect today who's coming out tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, so he's going to do the inspection tomorrow because we're in a time crunch, but if we don't, if we don't pass and we need an inspection, I mean, we need a repair, that, it's got to be done by the 19th or we can't even hold anything there for the fair. So, we've never had it inspected, even though they're supposed to be inspected every five years. So our former building inspector just didn't do it.
And this whole thing with the building inspector has been a nightmare.
So the building inspector is enforcing codes that have never been enforced, so all, you know, it's all new, it's not new, but it's all new to us, so we just have to, we just have to comply. And he is working with us, so in the event it does need a repair or something like that, he'll work with me, we'll get it done quick, so.
What was the time again?
Tomorrow morning at 9.
No.
CM Geeks received all of the equipment this week, I actually had two installs today, so I got a new computer and the, and the old tech collector's office is going to be my assistant's computer. I'm not sure which office I should have, you know, if I should have that office and they should be here in case, you know, to get out all the files, or if I just stay where I am and then they go over there, I mean, I'd like to have my own bathroom, that would be nice, but I don't know yet, so, right now the assistant's over there. I joined the legislative committee and bylaw committee through STAM, so there are small committees that work for the Commonwealth to, you know, obviously write bylaws and legislative work, so laws. Just so you know, it's nothing special, it's just, they need the town administrators to do this, I'm not the chair or anything, I'm just on it. And today we had a meeting with the two other towns, with New Braintree and with Hubbardston regarding the school budget and how the process goes, and we're all in agreement that it's an unsustainable process and unsustainable request that they have for us, so, you know, honestly, as a business standpoint, it's just, it's, it's just not going, it just doesn't work. So I know that it's partly due to formulas and partly due to, you know, specifically regional schools, which is why I asked Desi if I could have an appointment, you know, a meeting with them, just so I can understand what goes on and, you know, to really let them know that this process is not sustainable for our small towns, clearly we have regional schools for a reason. So, we already had that discussion, so I just wanted to let you know about that, so that's it for me. We have one, so I, I bought keys that I was just going to knock through, but then it was $24, I was like, okay, I'll get reimbursed. I made keys, the billing inspector didn't have keys and made keys for the veterans' office, everybody's moving, et cetera, so, and postage, I had to send something overnight for, for the sweeper to get the plates, so that's for me, reimbursement up the top of the left and I'm not going to sign my own, obviously, those are the receipts.
Okay, that's $32 and $50 for us.
Yeah, it's fine. Typically, and I've told everybody, you know, we don't do this, you go through a vendor, the invoices, you, I'm trying to get everybody to get away from this, but I needed the keys and I needed to send that overnight, so, sometimes you can't avoid it, but for the most part, I don't like people getting reimbursed, first of all, you don't get your tax back and it's just not good practice, it's not good finance practice and definitely DLS will say something about it.
Only if it's a percentage, it's got to be a high enough percentage.
Yeah, it's got to, it's, people have to be, you know, almost a way of abuse, but I just don't like it, I just don't like anybody using their personal money and waiting to get reimbursed, it's not fair to them, so.
One thing, one of these second ones.
Okay, well, sure, let's do it.
As I, I'm happy to call on this email I sent to the sewer commission saying that we're in this limbo with the sewer and I don't know if the selectmen should start being a part of any sewer meetings.
Sure.
Is that some point? So should we just move on to Monday night and whomever, I really don't know, you have sewer commission, I guess, basically, nobody cares anymore. So like I said, so maybe, that's what I'll do, is I'll just move it to Monday night and like our following meeting.
When are we, when are we going to hear back on the-
Well, it could take up to two months.
It's already been almost two months, right?
I can reach out to Donnie Burke, he was the other guy.
Yeah, you can.
I will.
So we might vote to the STAM?
We voted to, well, we voted to, yeah, so, but obviously there's a, there's a lull in here between-
We just accept it.
And technically, everybody's still elected to that convention.
Are you going to have enough people to actually transact business?
One, one other person will come, not, he wasn't available this week, so I haven't moved the meeting page. I have not heard of this, so.
When are you, when did you vote the meeting to?
I haven't moved, I haven't picked a date because I've written emails in between running today and I haven't got back to our superintendent yet, so could not make a date of next week, so I'll try to adjust it from there.
You're thinking, because the next meeting is this September, so you're thinking you want to do it on Monday?
Maybe I'll just try to shift it in somewhere here.
In, in September, there's not even any business for you guys, right?
You want to just do it on Tuesday? Do it after?
Just do joint sewer commission meeting, we can just keep those on our meetings, on our agendas until it's finalized.
So we'll do that on the 16th, that can be the first item of the business?
Unless you want to do, I mean, we want to deal with the budget, we can deal with the budget and just make the sewer meeting at 6:30 or 7:00 or something. I can always open the meeting and postpone it, because technically it's not a select, I mean, it's the sewer commission.
Right.
We can just open it and postpone it.
At least that's it.
Right.
So we're going to do that on the 16th, and then post those meetings?
I'll get that, I'll get back to the superintendent. It is in the contract.
Yeah, but if he's on vacation, I don't know, I have no idea if he's, I mean, did he ask you guys to take vacation?
Whatever, I, I'm at this point, I just want to make sure that somebody has him-
In the basement or something?
Right, if there's business to be dealt with, I just want to make sure there's an avenue for people to deal with it and it's nothing that you haven't dealt with before for super commissioner.
I don't have a super commissioner. I don't think so. I've been on the sidelines the whole time.
Well then, so I don't have to cancel my land for my souvenir?
No, I, I was going to ask, I just, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's good, that works.
You're going to have it this Wednesday?
Next. It was this Wednesday, which was fine, booked in.
Well, it'll be me some-
By yourself. Anything else under the roundtable? Very good, confirm we should adjourn?
I will adjourn.
I'll second that.
That will-
We're adjourning at 7:28.